I'm going to call to order the special call meeting September 11th. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Lydon?
Here.
Mr. Meldrum?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Stan?
Here.
I know it's not on the agenda, but being that today is 9/11, 16th anniversary of the attack on our country, Madam Clerk could provide an invitation to say the pledges.
Let us pray. If we can all take just a moment of silence before we pray, just to remember all those who were killed. Lord, we just want to thank you today for our freedom and for all the blessings we have as citizens of this country. We remember 9/11, we will not forget. Help us to always carry that in our hearts. We would also remember today all those who were victims of these storms or their families, especially all those who've lost family members, lost their homes. We keep them in our hearts. Help us to always be grateful for everything that you have done for us and continue to do for us every day. In name we pray, amen.
Village of Rock's Gap, United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains under God indivisible, no deliverance, and justice for all.
Since we don't have any proclamations or anything, we'll go right into our first item, a public hearing to hear comments from interested citizens concerning the proposed approval of the terms and conditions of a development agreement with Broad Metro LLC. This is to comply with Amendment Number 772 to the Constitution of Alabama. Mr. Rice, do you want to spend just a couple of moments to talk about what this agreement entails?
And, Mr. President, your discretion, we don't see the representatives of this agreement yet, we're not sure if the weather's got him, so if you would be willing to take that out of order, yes, sir.
All right, and we will go to the next item, which is a public hearing to hear comments from interested citizens concerning proposed approval of terms and conditions of a development agreement with Altera Development LLC. This also would be to comply with Amendment Number 772 to the Constitution of Alabama.
Yes, sir, and I'll rely heavily on Mr. Corley for his input, he was very integral to the drafting and the negotiations of these agreements as well. This is a proposed development agreement with the company named for the project to be known as Village of Rock's Gap. Many of us are aware of the history of that corner in State of Trace and Learning Lane, so they come with a very robust, primarily retail, but some mixed use in their development, lots of second locations, lots of local businesses. And so we have a proposal to provide them with a development incentive in the amount of not to exceed, I believe it's 2.5 million per year for a total for the 10 years, I'm sorry, 2.5 million total.
Not to exceed 10.
Not to exceed 10. That number comes first? Correct. And they do have representatives here to fight here.
Zoning, there are no zoning changes needed, is there going to be additional use on roads?
They did not need a zoning change, and I don't think we anticipate additional use, they're planned.
Any other questions from the council?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Could the representative come down and answer a couple of questions?
Yes, my name's Kerry Burden with Altera Development.
Who gives you the address?
Yeah, it's 50. And most central is Presley, Dallas, Texas. 13th.
Mr. Burden, what percentage of this development has been leased already?
Right now, we sit at about 70%.
70%.
That's based upon, I have leases pending, this sales, getting the sales tax, kind of big grocery store, that's where we're coming to develop.
Have the ones that have already agreed to locate in your development, have you already negotiated terms with them?
I've negotiated, it's subject to sales tax. It's mainly for the above, you know, grocery stores and the big restaurants. I can't date the restaurant, like, with 7,000 square feet of restaurant, but once you come in, it's about a hundred dollars for the TIs, plus additional TI over and above another hundred dollars for this order for them to try to get into the market, help them get stabilized.
Some of these questions that I'm asking is, while this incentive is going back to the developer, I'm also interested in supporting the local business owner and these businesses coming into your development through this incentive.
Yes, the incentive is for them, so they can come into development and help pay for busting of TIs and pay for additional costs. That's why we're here asking, is to help draw low tenants and help bring in the smaller, non-national retailers that can come in and survive with the higher cost of construction as well as the cost of construction. That's why we're here.
Can you tell me how much, what percentage of this development will be retail versus office space and so forth?
About 60% is retail, the other usage we have is we have Dan's Studio, we have Keller Williams, maybe for 7,000 square feet, we have 12,000 square feet of metal that we plant corners, so it's a total of about 70, 7,000 square feet of locations.
Go ahead.
The reason we're doing mixed use is because to make the local retailers successful, the history of Dan's Development, about 30 years, we found out that we have to have additional use of such as trupes, or even successful during the day, so the Dan's Studio, the medical and Keller Williams will help the local people save business, the restaurants and the other parts, so driving about 800 people there every day just to help support the negative impact.
And I'm sorry to repeat here, but can you explain to me one more time how this incentive will be trickled down to the small business owner?
Well, the small business owners will get the benefit of their sales, they're going to get back, and they're going to get repaid back to them, and they'll pay for their tenant for mixed use. But it's going to go directly to them, they're going to get it in order to help pay for that rental rates, because if we amortize additional TIs into the rent, they're going to pay higher rent because they're going to get the, this to help offset the additional TIs that they have to get.
Thank you.
Please, for those that don't understand, what is a TI?
Tenant improvement dollars. You know, the cost of construction right now, it averages, you know, different retailers have different finish-up levels, grocery store, then probably close to 80, $9 a foot, which normal retail gets about 30, $35 a foot, so that over and above that to pay for, so we amortize it in the lease and pay for it, this will help offset it where it's possible.
Any other questions from the council?
Mr. President, if I may, what is your anticipated sales tax revenue for this per year, based on the tenants you have now, can you give us an estimate per year of what you're planning?
I'm going to revenue generated on this center to be 30, $35 per year per decade, based on the use of the cap today, depending on different uses it could go, uh, people that are going to be, you know.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may ask a question, that 7,000 square feet restaurant you referred to, is that a restaurant currently located in?
Uh, in Mills, but it is a, it is a Alabama restaurant, it's in Alabama.
Sure. Yeah, the reason I ask is, you know, I think to Dr. Meldrum's point, we want to be cautious about what I call cannibalizing other developments.
This would be a brand-new development, yeah, would you have local, other, I can fade the data, you sign a couple long with this person here, got a couple other, you could track checks, other local persons, so we're not, we're conscious about not cannibalizing other developments, but we are trying to not go to big national retailers and stuff, we're trying to bring local out.
Great, thank you.
Anything else from the council?
There's one thing to figure back on, when you talk about this sentence passing down to the owners, that will, this is build-outs.
Right, yeah, they can, they're going to pay higher rents.
So, so some may have like scrap blocks, when they come in, they require certain laws up here versus here.
Right.
Which is that, which is the expectation, are there a couple modifications?
No, they're, we're building a cold dark shell, they're coming in, they're finishing out the way they want, it's not like finishing out your house if you spend, if you want grants instead of wanting, there's up charges, so they're going to help you use that and pay for their up charges.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Okay, if you would come on down and be ready after Mr. Burden.
As I said, I can't see the detriment of increasing traffic at the intersection that is already swaying the traffic, 3,000 shoe, high shoe, 1,000 shoe, capacity, other winter shoe, two kinds, several like that.
I think you're just putting that on record. This is property that is being zoned commercial quite some time, and we are actively working on, in some kind of way, trying to find some time to start determining another delivery system, how to trace costs. I'm assuming, you know, as Trace spoke. Yes, sir.
Pete Mosley, 3415 Heather Lane, Hoover. It was sort of kind of hard to hear someone's answer because the mic wasn't up where you could hear, but my understanding is that this rebate, or, you know, is to help us to, both because they're going to be paying a higher rent upfront, and it can help them offset that. But if they're paying that much higher rent upfront, this is only going to last just a very short time, are they still going to be able to afford it up in your development after that runs out?
Now, this is.
If they can't afford it upfront?
This is also to help with their build-out as well, to pay them for their build-out expense, as well as some assistance with rent, like anything else in business, I'm sure they've done their own work on determining what they can and cannot afford.
I would hope, but it just concerns if they're having to subsidize them upfront after a short time, then if they're going to have to leave the development because they can't afford it, and you're going to have any store first.
I don't believe so, if one is coming after this, it's going to make this look like a sausage can.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The interesting part is, we're just trying to help the tenants come in and get stabilized. When you start any new business, you have upfront costs, you have operating, you don't know your full revenue, you don't know what your projections are, so they're making estimates. I can tell you this, at all the tenants are signing 10-year leases, so they're not going away, they have personal guarantees, so they're financially strong people, that's one of the things we do, is we vet them out to make sure, but they have ramped up, they have stabilization costs upfront, we're just trying to help them as a cost increase to help pay for their upfront costs.
Any other questions from the public? Anything else from the council? Mr. Corley, if you'd please read Resolution 5649-17.
5650-17.
Right, Resolution Number 5650-17, this resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into a development agreement with Altera Development Company for the provision of certain economic incentives to such entity for the public benefit as defined in the agreement, and to authorize the validation of this agreement in certain court protection.
Mr. President, I'll move for approval, Resolution 5650-17.
All right. Motion and a second, any comments or questions at this time from the council? And from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If those pose an aye.
The ayes.
Oh, we have one there. Mr. Rice, are we ready for our interview?
Yes, sir.
All right, public hearing to hear comments from interested citizens concerning the proposed approval of the terms and conditions of a development agreement with Broad Metro LLC. This is to comply with Amendment 772 to the Constitution of Alabama.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, this is the project, I think the working title at this point is State of Trace Villages at the intersection, so along Highway 150, the intersection of State of Trace and bordered by 459. Been quite a bit of activity there, this property is already zoned commercial, and so there is a plan that the developer could enact right now under current zoning. Actually, we have been in fairly intense negotiation with the developer for several months, asking them to rework that, what we would consider to be a gateway development to the city of Hoover, at that major intersection right off the interchange. They've been extremely amenable to that, there are a couple of aspects to that, it has a little bit different development cost than what they would be allowed to do under current zoning. Also, some of the things we're asking them to do based on our sense of the community's current mindset about development standards aren't reflected in our zoning ordinance right now, so one of the things we'll deal with P and Z tonight is the opportunity to revisit our P U D regulations, which would allow small commercial villages, it's kind of hard to define what a village is supposed to look like until you see one, and so this would allow us to take it on a project-by-project basis like we've done with other P U Ds for many decades. So, because of that, and because of the scope of this very unique development, some of the amenities that it brings with it, we're proposing a development agreement based on the same 50% sales tax rebate, this is a 10-year timeframe, there is a fairly high stated cap of $20 million, based on the developer's own retail sales estimates, we don't think that $20 million would be realized, we hope it is, because if it is, that means the city of Hoover got $20 million. But we think that that's probably was an early number in the conversation, but one of the things that I know I spoke with you, Mr. President, both of the relevant chairs, is that we really have our eye on the number of years, and at what point do we reverse out to 100% of the revenue? Cap is, is goal, it's something to shoot for, we hope they make it, everybody wins, they do, but if they don't, we really are, we're really fixating our attention on the number of years of the agreement. I think those are probably the pretty unique aspects of this one, so unless anybody has any questions for me, I know they have representatives here.
Mr. Mack, do you have anything that you can put on the screen? No, I know the consultants have brought some storyboards or something.
We'll let them use theirs, and also, I think the clerk distributed to you today a substitute site plan that more accurately reflects the conversations we've had with the developers.
All right, if the representative has come on down and ready themselves, let's start off with questions from the council. Mr. President, I'm sorry, my voice going on, what is your revenue per year for this project?
Yes, sir, my name is Murphy McMillan, I'm a lawyer with Baker Donaldson in Birmingham, Alabama, and I'm working with Broad Metro with Mr. William Cage.
William Cage, is he here, address please, I'm sorry, sorry, address please.
I'm sorry.
I'll send you a thank you card.
420, 20th Street North, Suite 1400, Birmingham, Alabama, 3520. And then, in solid strength, Morgan Politics here also, and I'm sorry, revenue projections, total revenue projections are just over 57 million.
All right, and what percentage of these businesses would be new to Hoover? The, the, the ones that you've talked to already and locked in?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Mr. Cage to come up and help address that question.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Give us an opportunity to hear us out. My name is William Cage, a member of Broad Metro LLC, 135 Jericho Turnpike, Old Westbury, New York, 11568. Heard your thoughtful question, and what I can explain, I'm a developer basically, and we do developments in 42 states. They're, they're trying to maintain a low profile despite our, sort of, lately, lately, and, but wherever we've been, we've done the right thing, we've tried to listen to the, not only to the tenants and their needs, which is, which were made known to us, but also to the people who live here and to your city leaders. The tenants that we're familiar with, there are certain special types of tenants, that they have their, they have their specific programs, they know what they want, they've come to Hoover, they've seen the other competing developments, they've seen the growth, which defined development just doesn't have the visibility that you, that you would, that really grabs you, it's not the once-in-a-life, once-in-100-year development that attracts you to Hoover and gets you to look into Hoover and say, wow, this is heaven on earth, this is where we want to be. We heard it, we heard it from several, several really great retailers, who actually walked this site and wondered why it never got developed, and it was two different owners, that's why it never got developed, and they were, and it's not such an easy development to do. But I would say that we're not, this is not competition for your other, for your other shopping centers, they have their, they have their troubles, they have their issues, they have their slow down with internet sales and competition, this is designed to bring the new prototype retailer that wants their specific custom-built space that is a prime location that's visible from, not only from I-459, which they drive by to go to the games and to go, go to Birmingham, and, and your, and your great retail parkway in I-150, which is going to be five foot off of the grade, which you can see it from the road. We're looking to bring out the best characteristics of this property, we've heard the city, we understand, we've heard the city voice the views of the residents for their wish to have more of a village type, a Main Street type of approach. Now, this property, all day long, could be, could be a power center, big ugly boxes. We, we heard you, and we're trying to bring you something special. The restaurants, and now you have the Finley Complex down, down the block, it'll limit visitors, and there's, there's a need, and we've heard that need, we've heard the need about bringing hotels to I-150, bringing retail, bringing the restaurants that you want to I-150, the restaurants that may experiment in Huntsville or Atlanta, or, there's a couple of them in Mountain Brook, and, they should be here in Hoover. And that's, I came to you a percentage, but I would say any tenant that moves from another shopping center to this property, it's probably the exception, and they probably would have left town otherwise. Thank you for the opportunity to answer your question.
Any other questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President, I'll ask you some questions, I'll ask the other gentleman. I'm interested in knowing how some of these incentives will trickle down to the actual business owners located within your development.
I have to, I have to give your current administration some credit, because, yeah, because that's not the way that this is designed to, this development incentive was promised to us, we've been working on this for two years, it wasn't promised to us this way with all these conditions, it was originally promised by the other administration as a lord of the school, it was quite an incentive to come in, and this is, this is a way for us to recoup some of our expenses, and we'll, we'll be happy to review all the numbers with you tonight, and small portion of our expenses that we get back from the development incentive agreement, and allows us to go out and offer good deals to these tenants to lure them to come here, but by no means that the original development agreement include a village, anti-compete, you know, protections against your existing, protections for your existing retailers, it was, it was a, a negotiation, it was contested, and from both sides, but there was a good spirit about it, and you all were right about the village, there is a need, and the retailers are coming, and that we were, we're already starting to have success with new tenants who are not at Hoover, who are coming. I want to tell you more, I like to talk, but, so I wanted, I wanted to tell you, I got scared, I think we're under confidentiality, something not allowed to right now, but I think you'll be happy with the following.
Mr. Cage, I applaud you for your willingness to work with the city and continue on through this new administration, you know, drawn out, however, my concern and problem right now is, is that I understand your confidentiality agreement here, but for me to agree to this, I need to understand what the city's investing in, and right now I don't fully understand.
Sure.
Understand that.
We can give you the specifics of what we're doing, and clearly, we don't, we don't get, we're, we're putting our money where our mouth is, we're, we've started the work, we put up the bomb that the city was smart to ask for to replace the trees, $650,000 bomb for landscaping to make sure it gets done, if we don't go forward, if we don't have our tenants, we're not getting any of that back, and as far as the development agreement, if no sales are generated, we don't get a penny of our, of money back from the development agreement, so, that's, I just share your concern, I understand, and I want to tell you more, but what I, what I have told, and, and it's, I want to tell you more.
I understand, and I want you to succeed as well, as we all said, if you win, we all win, however, not knowing what, what the city's investing in, like some other people mentioned, the non-compete clause, I just want to make sure that we're recirculating dollars from other like-minded businesses.
That's a very thoughtful concern, and that's not our, that's not what we're doing, and we'll be happy to share some, some, some specific information with you now, I'm going to let my attorney address it, so this way I don't. I'm going to let my attorney address it, so this way I don't cross over the confidentiality.
Mr. Cades, perhaps, keeping with your confidentiality, you talk about the types of businesses.
Yes, yes, I can tell you that it's a, and this is another item, on your development agreement, we only participate to the extent it's a retail use. So, while the city benefits from just about every use, whether it's lodging or it's real estate taxes from an office building, we don't participate in that. But we put the development first, and we've attracted a 39,000 square foot single tenant, world-renowned medical office tenant that will serve your community very well. That's about all I can say. On that end, we have a new-to- Hoover organic grocery that people are otherwise traveling quite a bit to get, has a big following because they have very high-quality products and then prices are very reasonable. They're also very stable. These are the type of tenants that, once they move here, they're going to be part of your community, they can support your events, and they're enduring type uses.
Mr. Cades, may I ask you a question? I know in looking at the traffic patterns on this development, I know the kind of developer you are, and you mind sharing with us road improvements, and you'd be willing to talk about the amount of money you've allocated for road improvements at Highway 150 and State and Trace?
Counsel, John Lighta, I would like to have my engineer address that question.
My name is Mark, it's Austin, Austin Street, this station, it's 2176 Parkway Lane Drive, Hoover, Alabama. I'm a civil engineer of record. This project will be investing over $2.5 million worth of improvements at Highway 150 and State and Trace. I'll run through them real quickly, and I hope everybody, I'll speak loud, I'm going to step over here and point. Okay? We're going to add, from beginning at the exit ramp for the eastbound traffic from I-459, we're going to add a right-hand turn lane that will be continuous from the exit to I-459 all the way to the highway, or to the primary entrance to the development. We're going to add another through lane along the south side of Highway 150 that will be continuous, so that you can go from I-459, so that you can go continuously from I-459 all the way to State and Trace. That'll be a free-flowing lane that goes to there. That lane will be continued down State and Trace, so it comes up, becomes a drop lane that will take you right into Embry Drive right here. We're going to add on the left-hand, on the north side of Highway 150, a third lane, a third continuous lane that we will drop down here at I-459, so that coming out of State and Trace and features will be three left-hand turn lanes that can be accommodated on Highway 150 headed towards I-459. We're going to jump across the interstate, we're going to make another improvement to the interstate ramp from Highway 150 to the westbound traffic on I-459, which will be a double left, turning that single left into a double left. We are going to modify the signal at this location here, we're going to modify the signal at this location here, the first location being the primary entrance to the development, the second location being the State and Trace signal. We're going to add a signal to Embry Drive. We're going to add another lane to Embry Drive that will allow through traffic to come across an injured lane to prevent any impediment to right-hand turning traffic in this location here. So, all said and done, the improvements would see $2.5 million again. All signals will be tied together electronically so that they can talk to each other and keep them in sequence. No, I think we're good. Does that answer your question?
It doesn't. While you're here, if I could ask you, Mr. Gonzalez, Scott Creek Lake is a lake behind this property that has been adversely impacted by other developments in the last two years. Would you mind talking through your plans for either ensuring that lake is not impacted as a result of this development, or remedying any runoff that occurs as a result of this construction?
Yes, we've developed this project, a five-part B&amp;B plan for this project, and B&amp;B's intent to practice management practices to control our runoff during construction. The project uses a lot of techniques that I haven't seen used widely in this area yet, but we're going to be including PAMs and blocks with your agents to help pull the color out of what might be disturbed. But, you know, our first phase has been implemented, you can see it right now, you incorporate the double O silk fences all the way around the project to have a mitigating, and with a natural buffer zone that we're maintaining at this stage, where we start to move dirt from this area here into this area down here, we maintain a natural buffer against this so that we can use it as a filtering mechanism as well. We'll be using those double silk fences in this location here for filtering filters, and then on top of that, we use some of the natural materials that we have, creating brush firms that are about four, six feet tall, they're about 10 feet wide, they will remain down here, so as the water comes, it will be filtered in this area here. Once we move from there, we transition into a temporary cement basin that will be located in this area here, we create a dam across this area here so that the water is forced to be caught here, we will enclose the stream that's here underneath the project, routed around the project, so that none of our water during construction will go into this pipe in here. We'll again introduce PAMs and blocks and additional silk fences and whatnot. When we transition from there, we're starting to, at that point, we've moved probably 600,000 yards of dirt at that point. We'll transition to that, where this pond will start moving into a different location on the site, we'll start getting this pond in place, that'll be our third phase. Once this pond's in place, again, then we'll add back the diversion burns, directions, storm drainage pipes to get this to this point here. Again, we'll add PAMs and blocks to keep, you know, the drainage down. Then we go into a fork, which is more typical, but you see going along with inlet protections on the different storm drainage systems that we get. And then fifth is our permanent stabilization, being the trees that are required by the city, landscaping permanent stabilization is what we go into. We're spending over $650,000 on our road controllers project alone, and it's what gives us the ability to be able to manage it. We've gone out and surveyed the lake downstream, Scott Lake right now, of wrecks or the sediments that are in there, we're going to keep track of that, so if something gets in there by us, we can go back and get it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
I do want a quick point, but you did say, you know, for a wrecking of a little barge route.
Yes, sir.
And lastly, any concern, I call that I-150 southbound heading back towards I-459, as you make the left turn onto State and Trace?
Let me see if I got you, any concern for southbound I-150?
Yeah, I'm southbound making a left onto State and Trace.
And State and Trace?
Right. Me, from a sewerless side lane standpoint, him hijacking across two of these lanes to get to the interest to someone, or would that, would your signal kind of take here?
Okay, in this location here?
Yeah, but is the entrance upstream, right?
Yes.
No, go up.
Over here?
That's State and Trace.
This is State and Trace.
Okay, so it'll be entrance right there at that intersection.
Right here.
Okay, so when I make a left turn onto State and Trace, I'm going to try to get across and get to the right-hand lane.
Oh, oh.
Is there any concern of the?
Oh, yes, the weed, that's the weed, what we were referring to is the weed, yes. We looked at that distance, we got about 1,000 feet here to accomplish that motion, so with the signal in place, you know, and they're going to have, there'll be all the other lanes of traffic that we stopped and turning left here, we're going to see that as a problem, we've got plenty of room so that we can transition from here over to this safely.
So, coming, we're coming in that direction, making a right off interstate, that would that be stopped? So, if I come down?
No, you won't have to stop, you'll have to stop here, because I'll have a signal.
Pass me that.
Because that'll be a free flow all the way to there.
So, would those two come together?
Because we have the long distance, 1,000 feet, and that gives us the opportunity to allow the weed to occur safely in that zone right through there.
I have one question. What's the total investment of this whole project?
Preferred law, talk counsel. So, the total investment on vertical improvements is in excess of 56 million. In addition to that, there's approximately $9.5 million in infrastructure, roadways, sewer, gutter, that sort of thing, and then there's an additional probably $5 or $6 million in site work that the developers undertake.
As part of this, part of that doesn't include property tax, right?
That's correct.
With property taxes, right, so we're taking woods and turning it into a plus million-dollar facility. I guess the second question is more for Mac, is, this is just the C2 portion on that corner, correct? The agricultural land on the other side is not included in this?
This property is comprised of the planned commercial zone as part of this crossings, probably about a third of the site, and the remainder is in our base C2 supplement.
But that other agricultural plot is a whole separate from all of this?
That's right, it's to the south.
Any other questions from the council? From the audience, Schultz. Al, if you'd be ready, right behind, well, you're already there, go ahead.
Well, they're coming this way, Mr. President, I should have made one additional comment, and that is to Mr. Lighta's earlier question about cannibalization. There's specific language, and I'll defer to Mr. Cooley to find the section for us that protects against that in many different cases, big boxes, like grocers, but there's certain language that's built into this particular agreement that is a safeguard against that, and Mr. Cooley can elaborate on that, I can put him on the spot.
I'm Gene Powell, 3322 Denver Road. I'd like to know how my specific technical job is going to cost the city.
I don't see where it's costing the city anything.
It's not, we aren't on your meaning incentives or anything?
The taxpayer made the decision.
Powell, something that bothered me over here, about across the road from I-150 from this development, is a dead shopping center with Old Windex, U.P., and several other stores. That's one. And diagonally across the interstate over there, I-459, you've got the Grove, that's not getting up too much, got empty stores, and other vacant places to build. Now, are we going to do the same deal here, setting up off of I-150 at State and Trace two or three years from now? People moving out, goes in there. What kind of guarantee do we have from these people? Are they going to be successful of that?
If I could answer your question about the two existing shopping centers, there have been multiple attempts, different people buy the Windex in front of the hospital. At this point, they don't seem to be willing to sell. As for the Grove, they've got a requirement, and I don't know how they got everybody to agree to it, all the stores have to vote to let somebody else open the store. And I think that that has been used quite many people coming into that development itself. So, those are unique situations to go over those shopping centers.
Yeah, but having that sitting there, and the Grove and Windex down here, that doesn't look good, because you can see both of them. Now, we're going to have another one up there to look at, and I would question that.
Mr. President, family too, Mr. Powell, we just heard the gentleman talk about the investment that Mr. Cades in his company, so that man sitting right there is gambling on about 60-plus million dollars.
Ooh.
So, I could say, Mr. Cades, I certainly can't speak for him, but he's very confident he's going to be able to fill this, or he wouldn't be investing that kind of money in our city.
Ain't been before.
Yeah.
Mr. Schultz, if there's anybody who'd like to speak behind Mr. Schultz, you can come on down by way of the wall.
My name is Robin Scholz, 348 Albemarle Drive. I'm concerned about one thing that was explained during the traffic portion. As I look at the council, and I look at the gentleman that spoke earlier, majority of you have not gone through State and Trace traffic during school hours and during SEC traffic. And right now, adding a traffic light right past I-150, that's going to make morning traffic super interesting, but afternoon traffic almost impossible. So, I question whether or not that's going to be a smart thing to do. I'm not an engineer, I'm just a parent of some children that went down that road for many, many years, and that may need to be revisited because that's going to be a problem. I mean, a major problem.
So, do you understand that if you put a big box shopping center on that property right now, and all he's got to do is plow for building from there?
I'm not disputing the property itself, I have zero problem with that. I have a problem with putting a traffic light 1,000 feet from I-150, and that's going to impede traffic tremendously. I think that possibly sitting up and watching how the traffic is in the mornings and the afternoons, how the kids drive and how the adults drive, and add an SEC tournament in there in May, it'll become a very interesting issue there.
They have brought Daryl Skipper on board to deal with the traffic study, and Mr. Skipper is very good at what he does, like the city's used him on many occasions over the last few years.
I was wondering whether?
And he's the one who helped design, you know, and working with the developer and engineers, and all of that, who played a large part. I don't think he would do anything to try to make the situation worse.
Fair enough.
I think you've covered it, I think, Mr. Schultz, generally, like when you change traffic patterns just a little bit, you continually go out there and verify certain things, and you can change your traffic light to manage such. Police department does a great job too, when they know they're going to have a heavy traffic pattern, to manuage and go out there and modify it as well, from sales to police go out there. So, to your point, that's a valid point, but generally over your span, you have traffic monitors that will evaluate even after the design has occurred, so we can always go back and revisit traffic pattern, you know, light changing.
Any other questions from the council? More from the council.
Oh, Arnold. Arnold, number 613, we're ready in place. It's interesting that you mentioned about the traffic engineer, because the pieces have started to fall into place. I remember him commenting about traffic with the overall traffic crossing discussions that took place over a couple of months. So, that familiarity with the traffic flow is not something brand-new. The past 37 years, I've been attending meetings, not only here in Hoover, but from Edison, New Jersey, and this is one of the nicest, highest-quality presentations I've seen of a development. I was, when I was reading through the development agreement, which, thanks for, Dr. Milton Brooks for sharing the packet with the public, I saw about a $20 million warrant. I guess that's a bookkeeping mechanism, but I was not familiar with how this was balanced off, and I was able to understand that a lot better. I think the city of Hoover should be commended, both the previous administration and the current administration, for this kind of incentive. We put out nothing. All the gamble is being taken by additional construction, additional investment, and we are sharing. I mean, to be able to keep a Star Zone comedy club with a small incentive, what they do for this community, provide a great entertainment venue, is terrific. So, keep it up, this is exactly the pilot development we need to see.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from the audience?
Anything else from the audience? Anything else from the council?
Mr. President, one final question. Mr. Rice or, or Mr. Mayor, is the city aware of what's going on, going in specifically, what's going into this development, and part of the confidentiality agreement?
Yes, we've been briefed to the extent that Mr. Cadish is able to, which was, which was to a great extent, based on the constraints that he has, on the letters of intent that he currently holds, and on the statutes of negotiations that he's had. We're very satisfied that the, this will be a long list of unique retailers to Hoover, some to the region, some to the state of Alabama. We don't really see, I mean, there's always gonna be general competition for business up and down the corridor, like Highway one fifty, but we don't see things that pose specific threats to our existing business. We see things that are enhancements, we think we don't have now. And we have to all remember that, that it is just a fact, that that area of town continues to grow at a rapid pace. We have a lot of rooftops, pre-crewed, prior discounts on this administration, and those people are coming to Hoover, and so the capacity for that corridor has to be reinforced.
Well, I would say to the millennials, for not knowing specifics here, I'd be remiss to say that I, I do trust your judgment, and I do, I do trust the mayor's judgment here. So I will be basing my vote off of, off of that trust.
You appreciate that.
Uh, Dr. Middlebrook, if I could as well. Council leadership was also participating, but we were helped.
I'm sorry, Ed. I don't mean to leave you guys out, I, I do trust.
Just wanna make sure that you're.
Trust them too. I, I trust them too.
Any other comments? If not, Mr. Cooley. Resolution fifty-six forty-nine seventeen.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into a development agreement with Broad Metro LLC, with the provision of certain economic incentives to such entity for the public benefit as defined in the agreement, and to authorize the validation of disagreement in the Circuit Court of Jeffrey County, Alabama.
Motion?
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution fifty-six forty-nine seventeen.
Second motion and second. Any other questions? Counsel from the audience? Hearing none, I'll, if I were to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Item number four, resolution fifty-six fifty-one seventeen. Mr. Cooley, I've had a request this afternoon that this be broken up into individual votes, eighty fifteen. So if maybe you just read the, the pertaining part, and then give a vote each person individually.
Yes, sir, this resolution elects the following seven persons to serve as members of the Board of Directors of the Industrial Development Board for the term of office set forth therein. And, Mr. President, I can read each individual name, and then if you'd like to read them individually, the votes.
Well, why don't we just take them individually, if you wanna read their name and their link behind, that's fine.
Brian Etheridge, the banking sector for two years, commercial retail and development sector, Jeffrey Pomeroy for four years, Jonathan Belcher for two years, healthcare sector, Dr. Joseph Horton for four years, technology sector, Josh Dennis, four years, utility sector, Andrew Stanford, Stanford, six years, and Deandre Wright, six years.
All right, so having heard that, I'll take a motion for Brian Etheridge.
So, motion. Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll, if I were to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Next, we have Jeffrey Pomeroy for a four-year appointment.
So, move.
And motion is second. Any comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll, if I were to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Uh, next, I see Jonathan Belcher, so move for a two-year appointment. Motion.
Second.
And a second, any comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll, if I were to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Next, we have Dr. Joseph Horton for a four-year appointment.
Second.
And motion is second, any comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll, if I were to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nays.
We have, um, let's call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Liede?
Nay.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Horton. Next, we have Josh Dennis for a four-year appointment.
So, move.
And motion is second, any comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll, if I were to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Next, we have Andrew Stanford for a six-year appointment.
So, move.
And motion is second, any comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll, if I were to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Last, we have Deandre Wright for a six-year appointment.
So, move.
And motion is second, any comments from the council? None, I'll, if I were to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Is that covered, Mr. Cooley, or do you wanna overall vote as well? All right. We'll do paperwork later, matter of course. Um, next is item number five, resolutions to authorize the mayor to execute agreements regarding the lease of properties located at five seventy-one Park Avenue, owned by the Hoover City Board of Education, and the old Bluff Park Elementary School building for use by the city for public cultural facilities as an art center, art gallery, and related facilities. Cooley, if you please read resolution fifty-six fifty-two dash seventeen.
Yes, sir, this resolution authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute a lease of real property located at five seventy-one Park Avenue in Hoover, Alabama, from the Hoover City Board of Education, for use by the city as a public cultural facility, as an art center, art gallery, and related facilities.
This is a month-to-month lease, at least for now, between the city and the Board of Education. Any comments from the, the council?
I'll move for approval of resolution fifty-six fifty-two seventeen. Second.
No motion, second. Now, if you have any comments or questions?
I've got a couple. My name is Mr. President.
Sure.
Um, I know this came up initially four, five, six weeks ago, and we talked about issues that may currently exist with this building, and it's my understanding the fire department inspector has been there and has cited a number of issues with the building. Would someone mind giving us a brief, you know, what issues there are and what the cost may be to remedy that?
I don't know if we ha, we have that before. With the new chief to the test here. There was recently a fire inspection of the, of the entire portion, both the store portion and then the annex that was built in the fifties. Think there were some structural issues, just because of the nature and the age and character of the building, and then there were some habit use type issues, practices were identified, so let you then summarize that.
Chief, be careful what you ask, just make it, congratulations, I wouldn't hear. Nice to meet you. Thanks very much.
Our fire department drove Duke Moore, when, okay, they went and inspected the facility. We have a detailed list of things here. Nothing that is catastrophic or can be repaired, but it's just routine things. We have a copy that I see, we have more copies. Or would you actually go over it?
No, I guess I'm more curious about, so would you say, chief, these are not showstoppers, meaning the doors have to be locked until, until they're remedied?
I think that they need attention, and Duke has, fire marshals given, give attention to that, and they have a certain amount of time to work to break those things. But, um, it's not this kind of showstopper.
They need to correct them being the, the landowner, or the, or in our case, the lease source, we agree to take this over?
Right.
Okay. And you know a cost to that?
Uh, we do not put costs to it.
So, to Hoover, that, I guess, the lease source, their, the property owner's responsibility to get quotes for remedy?
If we can assist and help and get courts, we didn't go to that extreme, which is the station.
Perhaps you can give Mr. Vice the, just for us to have a, just for, and include a copy incident.
Do, now, in this agreement, it's understanding the utilities on the building, do we have a dollar amount as to what that would be for thirty days?
We have, Mr. Posey, we have a summary from the school board annually for the past three years, and then I think year-to-date this year. We could certainly average that. Obviously, it fluctuates due to the nature of the type of heating equipment in that structure and seasons of the year, et cetera. We can, I think, I think we've sent the entire sheet out in the past, but we, I'll make sure that we've done that, and then we can also figure up a monthly average.
That's right, if I remember right, I'm attempting to estimate this as about.
I think that's a very close approximation. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I can see the, uh, recites that you're not the responsible capital repairer.
That's correct. I think it characterized the conversation that several council members and representatives of the school board were involved in. This is probably a stabilization move. This is an opportunity to remedy some specific concerns and valid concerns that the Hoover City Schools have for, as the property owner. It's to, uh, kind of ameliorate the anxiety that the artists might be feeling, because this has been discussed for many weeks, and I'm sure that brings about some, some angst on their part. And it's to allow the city the opportunity to intervene appropriately and help find that right landing spot for all of this, without signing on to several million dollars worth of capital improvements that might eventually be needed at that building. So it's, uh, it's an opportunity for everybody to, to bring some stability to the artists. We alleviate a burden, it's a very significant burden on part of the school board, and then we have stepped in and, and tried to be an essential partner to all of this, without signing on to, um, costs unknown in some cases.
I'm just curious, if it's not the responsible capital repairer, should we have a number? If we have a number, what is capital repair, and should we work to get an update?
Um, I think the, um, I would have to look at Dr. Lopez. I think the accountants would tell us what fell across the capital threshold. I think they would, they're the ones who kind of maintain that line for us of what's operational versus capital.
Do we know what that line is for?
Dr. Lopez, it may not be a dollar figure, it's more of a, the nature of the expenditures, is that correct? Does what would constitute a capital repair versus an operating expense?
Typically, over fifty thousand dollars would be considered.
It may be a dollar amount.
Any other questions from the council? Any from the audience? Time for the council? Hearing none, I'll, if I were to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nays.
All right, let's call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Liede?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Nays.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
So, uh, move passes four to three. Um, Mr. Cooley, resolution fifty-six fifty-three seventeen.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute a sublease for the real property located at five seventy-one Park Avenue, Hoover, Alabama, with artists on the bluff, for use by the city as a public cultural facility, as an art center, art gallery, and related facilities. This resolution also, also authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute a community services agreement with artists on the bluff for such purposes.
Any more motion?
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution fifty-six fifty-three seventeen.
Second.
No motion, a second. Uh, this is the agreement that would exist between the city of Hoover and artists on the bluff. This, too, would be a month-to-month, uh, lease until such time that the city is ready to move forward on a more permanent nature, which obviously is gonna be after we determine what the true costs are going to be, uh, versus the opportunities that the location presents. So if we have any comments or questions from the council?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Somebody here from artists on the bluff, it would speak. Okay, the, the specific question I have is.
John, do you want to come on down?
There, there is, there's a rent component in this, where you rent to the artist. What, um, what percentage of that rent are you paying currently to the current owner for the, this lease?
Mr. Johnson, please give us your name and address.
Yes, Ron Jones, two four three, Shenandoah Drive. Uh, currently, we have not paid, the agreement that was made with Linda Williams and the former superintendent was that we would not pay any utilities, and we have not paid up until this point.
So there's no, there's no financial responsibility, nobody at all?
Now, that's correct. We've taken over the new administration, we've taken over the responsibility for all the repairs and maintenance and improvements and that sort of thing, and we've, we've carried that out. There's no monthly utility bill that we pay.
Do you have a dollar figure in mind for the amount of money that you spend in the building as far as repairs?
How much we spent?
Yeah, over the last year or so.
Gosh, I don't have numbers to report it like that.
About how much, um, how much in rent do you think you've taken about a month from the artist?
For rent?
How much money from there is per month for rent, do you think?
Yeah, the rent, uh, per artist is, we currently charge four hundred dollars a month for our non-teaching artists, four hundred and fifty dollars a month for those that teach.
And how many, how many spaces are occupied right now?
We currently have about fourteen spaces.
Okay.
Fourteen, I believe, maybe, could be fifteen, but around the fourteen number.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the council? Any from the audience? Hearing none, um, I think I'm just gonna go with a roll call.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Liede?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Nay.
Mr. Shaw?
Nays.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
The, uh, resolution is not adopted by a vote of four to three, um, which means we have a building to lease and nobody to lease it to. Uh, I guess we'll deal with that in thirty days.
Do you have your vote?
Uh, you can, having.
Mr. President.
Someone who has voted in the prevailing side can repel, can ask for a, an issue to be repelled.
Mr. President, I think what we need to do is we need to sit down with artists on the bluff and talk about this agreement, because right now, we could sit down with your board and talk about this agreement?
No.
That would be nice, we have.
Yes, sir.
Any communications.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir, President, uh, that's the purpose of the lease, the remaining paid lease, month long.
Yes, sir.
And that's the purpose of, uh, doing this way, of course, of the, extension of the lease. Uh, so it's, I think it's something we're gonna have to do anyway, it makes it almost personal, not, not boiling, boiling it out in the sense, uh, if you're going, you know, you know, what it needs to, so, uh, again, we'll always come back. In thirty days, I.
Uh, Mr. Murphy, I think, I hear what you're saying, I just think that when you're gonna enter a contract with someone, you wanna sit down with them and talk about it. I mean, you know, this is the first time I'm hearing statistics on the rent. If we enter a contract where we're paying the utilities, but they're collecting rent, and there's an opportunity to recoup some of our investment, I think it's a better contract.
Well, the, the lease called for, uh, the repayment to the city of those monthly expenses on a monthly basis divided into the number of leased units. So whether you got ten, twelve, or fifteen, they're still gonna have to come up with a lot more, still over sixty-five hundred dollars a month. One more question, uh, I suppose, and I understand that, I think we've had a discussion about this topic a couple of months, uh, and I think the contract kind of allows some flexibility out there to be, you know, a lot of, I think, as such, to do his job, right to our president's point, I think, in that, uh, hoping to take care of all the things that you're asking for, so, again, we can come. Uh, Mr. Mr. Murphy, referring back to Robert Trules, once a vote has been taken on an issue, it cannot be brought up in the same.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn.
Mr. President, I'm going to do this, Eric.
Uh, well, we got one other piece of business to do. Uh, we've got some people that, that came to be recognized, and I, and I did not do such. Uh, the industrial development board, Ron Etheridge, you here?
Yes.
Please stand, thank you for your service. Jeffrey Pomeroy, yes, sir, thank you for your service. Jonathan Belcher, Belcher, we thank you for your service. Dr. Horton, Dr. Horton, Horton saw who? Josh Dennis, thank you for your service. Andrew Stanford, thank you for your service, man. Deandre Wright, thank you for your service, sir. All right, we've got a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, first, I want to apologize, planning the zoning, for having taken so long with these very important issues that we needed to put together. We have a motion, second to adjourn, all in favor, stand up.